We'll call the meeting to order. Will everybody please stand for the invitation? Now your heads.
I'd like to read in the Lord's Prayer, if anybody would like to join it, you may. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will come, on earth as it is given. In us to spare our sinners and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy kingdom come, and glory yours be revealed.
Say the Foxwood.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, do we have any changes to the agenda? Your motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Winsted to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to proclamations, Constitution Week, and I believe Mary Thomas.
Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the public law in 1956 to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annual week for the observance of the Constitution. My name is Mary Toney. As representative of the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I would like to thank the mayor and fellow city commissioners for setting time to celebrate the Constitution.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition to a magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Ashley Hutchinson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Concordia, Kansas, I do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights might never be regained. And when is whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal the seal of the Concordia to be affixed to this 21st day of September of the year of our Lord, 2022. And we'll have all of our fourth graders stand.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessing of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will go ahead and get moving on to the National Orphan Train Complex presentation.
My name is Wanda Phillips, and I'm the treasurer of the National Orphan Train Complex here in Concordia. And we just kind of wanted to touch base with you a year ago, and so we're doing it again. Sometimes we don't maybe share information as well as we could, and so we just wanted to discuss with you briefly tonight. I wanted you to know that NOT receives no tax dollars. We don't receive any federal, state, or county or city funding. We have a total operating budget of $74,000. And that's a pretty slim budget for our organization. We are funded from income from tours, merchandise sales, and donations. And I would say probably 90 to 95% of this money comes from outside state investments. We apply for grants to help with special projects, and we've been pretty fortunate to be able to get some money to help with some bigger projects. We are also entirely debt-free. So we don't, we, you know, have a little credit card debt here and there, a few hundred dollars, but basically, we don't have a mortgage. We don't owe any, any construction bills or anything like that. We do employ one full-time museum professional, and that's Kaylee Carson here. We have two part-time employees. We have one person who does research for us and another person who is our Saturday helper. Because we are entirely volunteer-driven. And we are few in number and getting up there in age, and so it takes a little bit more than some of us would like to admit to, to keep things going. We see approximately 4,000 visitors a year. And again, I would say probably at least half of those, maybe more than half, are from outside of Kansas. And so this shoestring budget that I've been talking about covers our salary, salaries, tiny salaries, our insurance and our utilities. And I would guess to make it 95% of this money is spent within Clough County. We try really hard to use local vendors, local contractors, as much as possible. Since the grand opening of the museum, which was held in 2007, we have collected more than $28,000 in sales tax, which was kind of surprising to me when I went back to add up the numbers. And of course, as you, you all know, a lot of that money comes back to our community and to our county. So if at any time, in any way, if there was a way that the city could offer support to us, we would greatly appreciate that, even if it would be the tiniest thing like forgiving our water bill. Anything would be appreciated, and we're not here to ask for funding, but just wanted to put that out there so that you would be aware.
Good evening. I'm Sue Sutton. I'm president of the National Orphan Train Complex. And it is now 20 years that we've been established. And we are, we have a historic building. We have the depot. It's the former Union Pacific. And we are on the National Register of Historic Places. The area around the depot belongs to us and is cared for by our volunteers. In fact, I was just out trimming some bushes this morning. And just want to reiterate some things that Wanda said, that our committee has been involved in very conservative steps forward in these past 20 years. Everything from the depot to the train car to the exhibits that Kaylee will talk to you about. But we think, and we hear this time and time again, that the National Orphan Train Complex is the number-one reason visitors come to our town. And while they're here, they visit our museum and also buy product from our community. We would like to invite everybody to come down and visit our museum because we make an effort to never get out of date. Even though the orphan train occurred between 1854 and 1929, that's 75 years. There is so much relevance to our story that is all around us and today. So if you would come down, I would love to give you a private tour myself. Just let me know. But anyway, like Wanda said, there's some small things that we need to attend to because a historic building is made out of old stuff now. And there are some maybe safety issues that we deal with, like brick platforms where the surface is uneven and people have fallen. But that is one of our big projects that is a challenge for us now. But there are little things that we can do, like keep the toilets flushy. So just, you know, when you bring visitors to town, what is the first thing they want to do is go to the bathroom. So anyway, let me turn this over to you, our new curator, who is the fifth professional curator that we have had since we became official here. Kaylee Carson is, and her husband, are permanent citizens of our town. And that is not the end of it, because if you take a look at her, we're expecting a third citizen. So Kaylee Carson, our curator.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I've already been introduced, so I don't have to introduce myself. Like Sue mentioned, we've got a couple facility-type projects we're working on right now with our historic depot. We've, in the last year, replaced the roof. The HVAC system, working on repairing some bathrooms now. And the next thing, the next big project we're going to work on is replacing that brick platform. So that's something you can watch for in the next year. But I mostly wanted to talk about a statue program, and that's what we talked about last year as well. So the statue program represents an investment of over $200,000 in our community, in our county. We've got, let's see, 30, nope. We decided it's 41 statues that have plaques that go with them already installed around our community, and we've got two more that will come before the end of the year. And every year we add, you know, a couple more. So these statues showcase orphan train history 24/7. They're always there even if we are closed. And these statues really do draw our visitors specifically to our downtown area. We're about a third of those statues located. And as you know, Concordia is branded as the orphan train town. And these statues are something that has helped put us on the map. And so we're very proud to be part of that investment in Concordia. And one more project that we just recently finished that I wanted to mention before we leave today is we are the custodians of about 20 boxes of orphan, orphanage records that come from an orphanage in New York City that no longer exists. And we were recently able to digitize all of those records, and just this week, those remain available online. So now people all over the world can access those records that live here in Concordia. And that would be great for people looking to piece together their family story and find out more information about those that came before us. So that's something exciting we've, we've just completed. And again, we just wanted to thank you so much for all the support that the city has shown us in preserving orphan train history and sharing those stories. And we, of course, look forward to and are grateful for your continued support. Thank you for your time. I have one more little thing. It's a care and maintenance of your orphan train rider, your statue. We have recently been working on getting ours tuned up, I guess, down at the complex. Just a couple of different products, household products that can be used. And I've been out, and I splattered with that stuff. I had a big brush I was brushing these little kids' hair with because they have been sitting where the water sprinklers are hitting them, so the water has, you know, collected on them, and they're looking a little bad. But once you do this, they just look like new again. So I'll just give that to the, to the statue. Thank you again.
Very thankful.
Thank you.
Public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Do you have public comments? Moving on to executive session into confidential business data.
I move that the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data for Train Secrets of the Business, ASA 754319B4, with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell, Dave Gardis, and Phil Gilliland in attendance, and to reconvene in the city commission chamber at... 15, you said? Okay. So 6:05.
There's been a motion in a second to move into executive session for the stated reasons. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. No action was taken?
I would make a motion to return it to executive session for the aforementioned reasons. Reconvening at 6:15.
Second. There's been a motion in a second to return it to executive session. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. No action was taken. We'll move on to our action agenda, Resolution 20222139, adopting 2022 housing study.
Mary, commissioner, you contacted with FICO Rural Planning to perform the housing study, and they reviewed the results of that with you on August 3rd. And the results of that housing study have now been posted on the city's website, and so they're accessible to the public in their entirety. We are still waiting on the hard copies that are coming to each of you and each of the court board members, but those should be coming shortly. And they were working on those. As part of the MIH grant application, they want to see a formal resolution formally adopting that study and using that as the guidance for future housing decisions. I do feel really confident in the results of that study. And I believe that our housing grant application is very well-aligned with the city recommended. And so that's the purpose of this resolution tonight, is to formally adopt the housing study as the guidance for future housing decisions.
Any questions?
I move to approve Resolution 20222139.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Dalton to approve Resolution 20222139. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Development agreement with Clough, with Clough County Health Center.
We're really grateful to the Clough County Health Center Board of Trustees for taking action to donate about 8 acres of property to the Concordia Land Bank for the purposes of housing development in Concordia. Again, that just aligns with the housing study that we've done and works out very well with the timing for applying for the grant. And so in order to begin that process and to acknowledge formal acceptance of that donation, we need to establish a development agreement. This development agreement was patterned after the same development agreement that we used from the city donated the land to the hospital, which is in hospitals being built. Very similar terms there. We described the formal boundaries of the property, so it'll be the property that's right now described as 1100 Highland Drive where the hospital site sits, as well as seven lots, one through seven, that sits out on the south side of Sunbar Drive, lot 127 of Lost Hills Creek, or Lost Creek Hills Division. Notably in that development agreement, the city would have 18 months to commence construction or to start construction. And when we think of that, we're thinking in terms of the infrastructure development that we talked about to make those houses, or lots, ready to build houses on. And then we must proceed with due diligence, very similar to what the hospital had on their development agreement. And the hospital does have, there's a reversion clause in there that would allow the hospital to reacquire the property at no cost. As the city will bear all responsibility for all the costs of the project. This development agreement does not financially obligate the hospital to anything related to the housing development. The Clough County Health Center Board is going to meet on Friday during their regular meeting for their consideration of this. And again, we're trying to meet that deadline in September 30th, so that's the reason that we're looking at it first. The development agreement has been vetted by Justin, as well as the hospital's attorney. And all, all parties are in agreement with the, with the conditions. It's supposed to be very compact for reference. Happy to answer any questions, but tonight we'd ask for your approval of that development agreement with the hospital.
I move to approve the development agreement with Clough County Health Center for the new housing development.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Bell, and a second by Commissioner Winsted. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Resolution 20222140, authorizing participation in the MIH grant application.
Mary, commissioner, we've been talking about this grant application ad nauseam. Again, one of the other checkboxes that we have to do is a formal resolution authorizing staff to actually submit that MIH grant application. And again, that grant's due September 30th, so we're hastily trying to meet that deadline. So I would ask for your approval to authorize us to proceed with submitting that grant application.
I move to approve Resolution 20222140. Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Winsted, a second by Commissioner Hash. Any further discussion?
The only comment I would make is that, just me being a bit pragmatic, you said hastily, and I don't think that there's been anything done in this process. It has been hasty. I think it's been done with a great deal of diligence and responsibility. I think it's a very thorough application. It is being done quickly, but not hastily.
Okay, thank you.
No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Resolution 20222141, intent to establish a rural housing incentive district.
Mary, commissioner, we talked about this in detail during the intergovernmental meeting on September 6th, and really appreciate everyone's time and efforts there to ask questions and understand how rural housing incentive district works. This is an economic development tool that's authorized by state statute that allows us to use the incremental increase in property taxes generated from new home construction to pay for the bonds issued to build the infrastructure that serves that housing subdivision. So when we think of water, sewer, street, storm sewer management system, all of that takes money to build and invest. And when we draw the boundaries around that subdivision, any homes built within that, they have to pay property taxes. When they pay the property taxes for the home that they just built, that'll go to repay those bonds or portion of those bonds. So there's a lengthy process to establish a rural housing incentive district. And the first step of that is to establish a housing needs assessment, which was prepared. And I believe we set that up to use, that you could see it, and it's referenced in the resolution here. It's available at the clerk's office in case any member of the public wants to take a look at that. The data that went into that largely came from our housing study that was just completed. So we really appreciate you, again, authorizing the housing city, because that helped us out tremendously. The second step is to authorize this resolution of intent. And then we will send that housing needs assessment and this resolution to the Secretary of Commerce. They will have to say, yes, we agree with your findings in the housing needs assessment, which is you have a housing shortage and government intervention is basically the only solution towards sparking new housing development, new housing construction. After the secretary agrees with us, and if they agree with us, then we can proceed with your approval of the redevelopment plan, which gets us to the details. That's where we'll show the, the flat, how many homes would be built on there. That's where we'll show the detailed financing plan and methodology. And you'll have to approve those at that time, and then we will improve form of issuing bonds and bidding out the construction work for the infrastructure. So those are the four steps that we have to follow. So tonight, by authorizing this resolution, you are letting the Secretary of Commerce know that we intend to use this tool to help generate a revenue stream to pay off the bonds for the infrastructure for the new housing subdivision that we intend to create. Again, that has, that has to be approved there, and it's also, as part of the MIH grant application, we basically get additional points, or we have a better chance of being awarded if we can show that we can effectively marry the use of the RHID with the MIH grant application. So it improves our chances of competing for that $650,000 to help get new homes built in Concordia. Are there any questions?
I move to approve our Resolution 20222140.
There's a motion by Commissioner Winsted, a second by Commissioner Bell, to approve Resolution 20222141. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And point of personal privilege, I need to record my vote on the Clough County Health Center Development Agreement as of today. Okay, moving on to minutes of the September 7th, 2022 meeting.
One comment I had, I was absent that day. But it said that everybody was there, and I haven't...
I noticed that yesterday.
There's an error, a motion to approve as amended.
To approve the amendments.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Winsted to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number 17.
I just had a question about the, the small animal clinic, which was answered, but their invoices were over a year. It was over $3,000 checks.
And that's for stay and neuter and all? Stay, neuter, and then all treatments?
For a lot of, most of cats, I think. But yeah, it was for 10 months, so.
I would move to approve appropriation ordinance number 17.
There's a motion by Commissioner Bell, and a second by Commissioner Winsted to approve appropriation ordinance number 17. Any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Ordinance 20223192, a street closure and special event for the all-class reunion.
So this is the same thing.
So this is the same thing that we passed last year, basically. And that was in order to have the all-class reunion and the selling of alcohol, I believe. And we've blocked off the street around the Broadway Plaza. Last year, we said the, they weren't in stated four P M. I did talk to Eric and we kind of decided to make that eleven A M. I don't know if that needs to change. We're actually blocking the street off earlier.
It'll, it will be blocked off as of, I think we said, two A M that morning for all the morning fall test activities. But having a designated time for consumption of alcohol would be great.
Yeah, so will they have security there at work or eleven o'clock? Are they closed at eleven? On eleven, I don't know. I mean, they're not going to sell alcohol until that evening. But last year we had put the same time for everything, so we just did that with this. We can change that and make that later also. Because I don't think they intend to do anything like that until the actual event that night.
Do you feel like they had, who, who asked for the ordinance this year? Was it Broadway Plaza or was it Pride Substance?
Actually, I thought of it when somebody started talking about Ty having, or E Z G having the catering there or the alcohol there. And I remembered that we had, that we passed an ordinance and designated the area. And then he happened to come in right after that, so I told him it would be on the agenda, but.
I guess my thoughts are, is that we have a coordinator there for a reason and this is a very basic part of that job. So if that is not communicated, that equates to a problem. So I just, I don't think that, typically we have somebody here with us who has a plan, who has a security plan like you were asking about. And we're not seeing that for the biggest event that happens at that facility every year.
Nobody did ask for it. I do remember in years past, it's kind of been a last minute thing, so we overlooks it. And we were always scrambling to get the license for the selling of the alcohol at the very last minute. I mean, like, I think maybe we called a special meeting one year, but because Ty has catering license, he doesn't have to apply for that. So that saved that time. He does have a catering license.
If, if, if you do choose to approve this, I would ask that the eleven A M start time be changed to four P M to match the event that the alcohol is intended to be served. And the reason for that is because this is designed as consumption. And I'm concerned that if we start it earlier, people are going to infer that as meaning bringing their own. And I think that's going to be very difficult.
So are they still having, are they having the? No, the thing, cornhole, are they having that event?
There's a teen lawn, I saw.
And do, are they planning on drinking at that?
No.
Coming out with a, I don't know. Do we know what time that one starts?
Team or teen?
Teen.
Oh, teen, oh, okay. Oh, I think it's a team.
I think that's not.
Yeah, I said one earlier, that's a law.
Or very little.
I was not saying, that's a good thing that it was more for the adults was earlier in the day. But I think they've moved that in the past.
I don't think I saw the location too far. The main.
Or that.
I feel like they maybe moved it.
I don't know.
It was, I saw it there on Broadway.
Last year, did it?
That's where I was thinking it was like.
I didn't say that. It was all that scheduled, but it.
It just said two o'clock.
If there's not, there's not a separate location, then we could assume that it needs downtown, but it didn't say two o'clock.
East of Broadway Plaza on Broadway Streets. So that would be in the block.
And it starts at two?
Yeah.
That makes sense to match that. But I would ask that it not start any earlier than an event that we would anticipate alcohol being consumed.
So could we modify, modify this ordinance to state two O P M instead of eleven A M? Is that, that's what.
Do you want it two or four?
Four.
Well, they're gonna.
They're gonna.
No, that one's.
Two o'clock if you can live with it for teenagers. They might want some more doors.
Two o'clock is best.
The, the problem I have with two o'clock is who's going to police it because Ty is going to be, I mean, his thing doesn't start yet, so.
So go back to who requested this.
Ty. Well, we, in order to have the special drinking area, we have, the commission has to approve it.
So did, did they want it specifically, did they ask for it for the all-class reunion or did they ask for cornhole and the all-class reunion?
Nobody really asked for it. I mean, we basically wanted, it's just like last year, it would kind of be the plaza that maybe would ask for it, but would be to expand the area because there's so many people during this, like the biggest. So to get them all in that fenced area is not good.
Who wanted to sell it came last year, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they, they, in past years, it's been a joint presentation by the person that wants to sell and the Plaza Director, so coordinator. So if, if we choose not to authorize this at all, then that would mean there would be no drinking in Broadway Plaza. The all-class reunion would need to be confined within the Plaza.
Yeah.
And it would mean there would be no consumption allowed during the cornhole tournament in the area.
So the, which would ultimately create more problems.
For sure.
Right, than, than approving this, I think, the degree to which, who's going to police it? In, in the history that we've had here, to my knowledge, there's been, there's been a single incident, a single bad apple that, that went bad. My hope would be that there'd be a degree of self-police, seeing there's an awareness that this is what's going on. People can hold themselves and each other accountable and if stuff starts getting Western, then people can call law enforcement and then law enforcement can police it. I think that there's a lot of mechanics about this that could be better. And I think that there's a lot more going on than that, with fall fest being this weekend. And to the idea of trying to allow this to move forward as simply as possible, it probably makes sense for us to pass this with some kind of moderate timeline with it, the two P M, if that's when the adult thing starts, that makes sense, then we're going to have fewer issues with that. And by saying, no, you can't, and create conflict there.
What's the catering license, though? Does he need the person or business that has the catering license, do they need to be aware of the times or their event? So is the cornhole is their event?
I don't know that. I don't know if that's fall festival or if that's their event. But I, I do think that if you choose to pass that, I think that one thing that we will do with the study is we will draft a formal letter. We will not mail it, but we will hand deliver it to make sure that it gets in the hands of the Fall Fest Committee and those that we know are involved in the alcohol distribution, consumption or organizing events, to make sure that they have that. And then we'll also share with them and then with the Plaza Coordinator as well, that in the future, we expect a timely request and coordinated effort so that we're all aware of what needs to happen.
In Ty's defense, he did ask if he should be here because he planned to be out of town.
Sure.
And I said I didn't think he needed to be, so. Because he could sell it regardless of passing this, whether it works.
Which I think is where he, that's where he's selling it, even with the passing of this.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I have heard it was run by U D G, I have heard this year, but it seemed it was the same, like commenting names.
So we just indicated that it is.
Everybody knows close. Chris, to your knowledge, like with this, the cornhole leaves, the city's been involved with a wreck or even one of the, have there been other conflicts or issues that was there? I really were talking about that, that incident that took place the first year they had it.
And that was after, something like an hour and a half after the cornhole stuff, no?
Because I, I appreciate.
The point is they've been there all day before. So I mean, we can't describe it, that it was just a whole big day of nonsense.
Agreed. We do have plans to have an extra officer out, Patty. So, but they will, will be, that's going to be their area of focus. Now, that's true there.
So they'll be walking through, having a presence known, but they're not dedicated solely to that event. They will be patrolling other areas of the council.
I remember seeing the last, whatever, several hours.
So we need to approve it with two o'clock instead of eleven. I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one, ninety-two, as amended.
Second. Then a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Lambert to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one, ninety-two as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. C N B license for the country honky tonk. That's hard to smell.
Dewitt came in and requested C N B license. He has opened already, but obviously isn't selling alcohol, I hear. He's been giving out cokes and things to get his name out there. And he does know he has to come in again at the end of the year for the one for next year, so this is just for this year. But he's pretty excited to get going, so we have checked everything out. Everything's fine.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-two C N B license for country honky tonk.
Second, there's been a motion in a second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Bellin, a second by Commissioner Hash. All the, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Manager's report. Manager's report, yes, sorry.
I would, I, you can ask her if she'd ever been inside the country honky tonk.
She, of course.
She said, in there, I own it.
Admittedly, this has been very heavily on housing the last several weeks, months even. And I have been, been out here on leave for a while. I want to thank you all for the very nice part and gift card. Really do appreciate your thoughtfulness and your support throughout this. I will, I am here in the office a little tiny bit throughout the day, working remotely a few hours a day, but do find you that full-time month of the third. Appreciate your support, having to answer any questions that I can attempt to answer, otherwise, this house is doing an excellent job taking care of you. Appreciate all, all their work, well known.
I had asked for an update for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, so we, just for everybody's benefit, Jeremy and I did sit in on a progress meeting yesterday. And if you'll recall, we did have a project shut down because they were waiting on some very major electrical components. So right now, there's no physical work being done, but we got an update yesterday. There's about eight weeks worth of work that still remains to be done there when they do return, once all the electrical equipment arrives. And that does include some site paving, that does include finishing up the electrical work. So we are working through that. We did get notice of a potential change order that may hit you the first week in October. There was a contractor construction contingency built into the contract that's been exhausted with the machine conditions so far. So any other changes would need to come to you for approval. It's fairly small, I think around eight thousand dollars. And it's for, once they got the shop drawings into the line, so there's a water line and an air line that have to be installed. And that wasn't anticipated until they got the shop drawings for that, that piece of equipment. So we do need to add those, it's necessary for the function, complete operation of everything, but you'll have to authorize that. We're also have, are having ongoing discussions related to the schedule and the remaining budget for construction inspection. So we contacted P E C Engineering to, excuse me, the design work and the construction inspection on this project. And earlier this spring, we anticipated the shutdown, that the electricians kept on working. And so construction inspector had to be on site during that time. By the time they did finish the shutdown, we anticipated another three weeks worth of work, which is how much budget we have left with construction inspection budget. Three weeks' budget is not equal to sorts of work. So we're continuing to have some conversations with P E C and with Paulters Morgan about that. P E C is working with Paulters Morgan on our behalf to compress that discrepancy and we'll kind of wait and see what happens on that. But we anticipate having an answer that first week in October, so we know what to expect. We do anticipate that the equipment should arrive by the end of October, so hopefully, we'll find some paint wood. Supply chain of laser are hitting us really hard. So hopefully, that work will restart again in early November, but it could be delayed further if we don't keep up with it on time.
Staff reports. Sorry, Jeremy. Mayor Fisher reports, we'll start with Fisher.
When I returned home last week, I happened to be coming down West Seventh Street and a property, I think it's in the seven hundred block of West Seventh Street, really stood out to me as being a mess, trashed. And since that time, somebody else has contacted me about that. And I know, I drove by it today, there's one of those little placards that's been placed. What's the status? Where are we at on that?
I'd be the nuisance.
It's, it's, I'm sure it's a nuisance, but.
It's been placarded and then it's a limited amount of time and it says on the placard, when the deadline date.
I didn't want to get out of my car.
Oh, I know, that's, yeah.
Well, we'll call it.
It would be within seven to ten days of when that.
Well, I'll tell you what, it, it's, it's a nice word and it's a problem.
I know she was working on a bunch of things Monday, so I don't know if that's one that she put off Monday or not, but she spent a good portion of the day working on nuisance.
Yeah.
I know, I know that one's had two placards on it already, so will you be able to follow up in the morning?
Two placards?
Yeah.
Yet we haven't gotten anything done about it?
Because the, the work required in the first clock there was taken care of. And then a couple of weeks later, a second news that it's still up, so it was placarded again. And the way the ordinance is written, it doesn't allow us, on, on tall grass, we can placard it once and then we can just go in and go repeat the nuisances. But anything else such as the debris and stuff, that's about particular one, we have to replacard it, start the process over again.
All right, that explains that. One other issue, too, the Lieutenant Governor is going to be in town on Saturday for the Fall Fest Parade. And they would like to have some parking spaces committed.
It's all say, they indicated they may be late. And so initially, I think the request was for some spots at the Brown Grand Park Lot, but because entries only allowed there off of Sixth Street and because it's part of the parade route, well, we decided this evening, and we haven't had a visit with you yet, but this was Stacy and Eric for the meeting. We will reserve two spots signed and cone outside of the police department and will provide them a map showing the driving route that they can get there, even if they get here right after the parade is started, so they will have reserved spots.
Okay, thank you.
There was some misunderstanding. We, I was told they wanted the whole parking lot.
Oh, that's where.
I think they wanted four spots, but two is better than none. That's where the misunderstanding came in, so, yes. Handle it both, all in the morning and get it figured out.
Great, thank you.
I had a couple things, one of them was that West Seventh, so thank you for stating that. And we've had several, I of course live up there, so we've had several people bending our ear about that property. I wanted to thank you for all of your work that you're doing, doing from home, because it's very, very extensive. And I've had the privilege of proofreading some of it, so I understand the work you're doing right now, so thank you. But I'd also like to thank the county board and the school board for unanimously passing it. That they're intent to move forward with R H I D. It's, that's the type of partnership I think our community has been used to in recent years. And I, I'm really grateful for that and hope to see more of that as we move forward. So it's a good start or a good continuation. Okay. Anybody who doesn't have anything else, we can.
I move to adjourn.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Hash to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.